Good afternoon. The August 13th, 2024 Board Work Session is now in, yeah, I'm sorry, and Public Hearing is now in order. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
All right. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Because we're past the time. We were past it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Dr. Rendell, can you please address the board with the items on the agenda for today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On today's agenda, we have rule development and first public hearing on two policies and one board member requested topic. Rule development and first public hearing on the following two policies. Policy 3120, employment of staff. Policy 7217, weapons. And then the board member requested topic is the FSBA 2025 Legislative Platform.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. So the first order of business will be the rule development and first public hearing for Board Policy 3120, employment of staff. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Seeing none, I will open the floor for discussion. Board, any discussion on this policy?
No.
Thoughts, changes, none of that? Okay, all right. All right. So the second order of business will be the rule development and the first public hearing for Board Policy 7217, weapons. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Seeing none, I'll open the floor for board discussion. Are there, is there any board discussion in regards to this policy? From anybody? No. Thank you to the staff for making the small minor changes that I had asked for for transparency and clarification. All right. All right. So we are now on to the first topic of the agenda, the only topic of the agenda, which is the FSBA 2025 Legislative Platform. Ms. Campbell, I'm going to kick this over to you because you are our liaison in this role. So I'm just going to go ahead and let you tell us what it is you want to hear from us.
Sorry, I was getting my, I was pulling open our legislative agenda from last year because I thought that would be a good launching place. So there's not a minimum or a maximum that we can submit. It's just whatever, this is, all the ideas from every board across the state will go to the Legislative Committee and they'll, you know, sort through and kind of, you know, combine ones that are similar and see if any of them aren't aligned with our overall platform and see, and, you know, put things out there. So any that we want to put, that, you know, is, the, one of the caveats is it can't be specific to Brevard. So, you know, we're not going to put things on there that we're going to put on our personal agenda. But I was just pulling up last year's, we had, number one was allow retired staff to return to the school district quicker. That was, actually, they can return?
Right.
After six months.
Six months.
So that was a huge win. Second, our allocation requests. By the way, if you want to look at these, this was on the school board meeting from October, hang on a second. What day? October the 24th of 2023, down, if you wanted to take a look, H38 is where I found all those. And so, here we go.
Sorry, you said October the 20?
October 24th, I say 23rd, 24th, 23. The board meeting, the board meeting, and then H38.
Thank you.
There was a specific allocation related to the Brevard Adult Ed, so that one, you know, and we got that. Or we, actually, we didn't get that. But we, you know, that's specific to Brevard. Number three was real world work experience related to that, allowing our students to take on, on the job training while they're still working towards their diploma. And actually, there was huge movement in allowing more students into more fields this year in the Legislature, so I'm going to take that as a win. Wage compression, number four, had to do with wage compression, giving school districts greater flexibility in determining the performance salary schedule. And I actually think we found that as well. And that's all. Those are those four. So really, we were kind of, we did pretty well last year. I'm looking to see if I missed something on the other document. Oh, no, sorry, one of them, one of the first attachment had more little items. It had to do with pre-K teachers. And I think that's something Mr. Susan's talked about for a really long time. We're still, we've still not ever made it very far to ask for the study, for them to really look at the differences between pre-K teachers and other classroom teachers in the K-1 system. So that's something, if you've got that on tap, Mr. Susan, if you want to address that. What else am I missing? We talked about the deregulation items. And I think we probably need to, I don't know how we put this. Number five, I'm going to just read number five from last year. Work to streamline the implementation process and expectations of new statutes and Board of Education rules. Deregulation of items would enhance the education experience of Florida students by allowing school staff to focus on teaching. An example includes the permission slips needed for every event that a student participates in outside of regular class and work. I'm not sure what we want to do with that. But that was something we've had last year. And then, we talked about district property regulations when it comes to charter schools, loving the playing field. The Legislature absolutely did that. I think we could put something in general, just supporting the continued deregulation, if we have some specifics we want to put in there. So if y'all have got something, I've got a pen and I've got a notebook, and I will take the notes and make sure we get those submitted to FSBA. We've got about a month, but as I said last week, this is our only work session we have before we have to get them all turned in.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I have a couple written down tonight, and I don't know if anybody would like to go first, or if you want me to jump in and go first. I don't mind going first.
If I could just, real quick, talk about the pre-K.
Yeah, sure.
Just because that has been a thing. So, we made a big push with a lot of pre-K teachers from across the state prior to COVID. And the state said, there's so much to this. So like, we met with, I met with education committees and worked behind the scenes in Tallahassee for weeks. And what they said was, because of the different laws and because of the different layers, there needs to be a study. So for instance, right now, pre-K teachers that teach pre-K, even though they're, they're in our schools, they're part of our employees and everything like that, can't get their loans forgiven if they're in a Title I school. They don't get retirement after. There's all these issues. And they said that they, you know what I mean, to just turn it and say, pre-K teachers are classroom teachers, there's so many ripple effects that they wanted to make sure they had. So I was promised prior to COVID that they would start a commission by some pretty high, from the Commissioner on Education. And so what happened is this COVID hit and everything else. Then we came back to it and they said, okay, yeah, we're going to, so here's what it is. Like to have a commission move forward with looking at the pre-K to find out how to make those classroom teachers whole. And that's it. That's it. And then bring that to the next legislative session and then pass it as a law, because there's a lot to it. That's all that was. So I'd appreciate if we could continue that one. This year, I'm going to get loud about it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Honestly, I don't think there's a district in the state of Florida who doesn't have a pre-K program to some degree that I'm aware of. So I think it needs to be looked at.
Well, it's interesting, because a lot of the pushback is that the private sector has those pre-K programs. And there's some, like, competitiveness and stuff that we ran into. So I think having a study identify where they are and then seeing what the impact is and then moving forward is the proper process. I'd appreciate if we could do that.
Would you be okay if I just borrowed the language from last year? Because it was pretty detailed on that at one attachment, because it talked about the federal loan forgiveness and the extended drop and all of that, that they don't qualify for?
Absolutely.
So if you okay, I'll just, like, copy paste that into.
I'm looking at federal loan, I feel like federal loan forgiveness changed, just so you don't have to add it, but I'm going to triple check.
And this, if you want the statute, the one that we have listed is 1012.01.
That's state statute.
That's state statute, okay. Okay.
And if you can add to the end of it, any other issues that, you know what I mean, like, because there's other issues that have come up since.
Right. I'll just put, for example.
Yep.
It's a great one. Okay, anybody else? Nobody's jumping all up and saying that, Ms. Jenkins? No, I didn't. I wanted, I wanted, that's why I was going to go in there and give a couple. All right. Something that I've run into in talking to other school boards around the state is the difference between having an appointed and an elected superintendent and the issues that that causes within a school district on really trying to have ideas or thoughts carried out. We're very fortunate, we're very blessed in Brevard, we don't have that issue. So let me go ahead and say that right now. Our superintendent has been nothing but wonderful on helping us on different things. But around the state, it seems to be that that's not always the case. And a lot of times, it seems that there, it's because their superintendent is elected. And so boards are receiving pushback from an elected superintendent who's not following the direction of the board because there really isn't the feel of accountability. Now, we understand there's accountability when it comes time for an election. That can, that is your kind of accountability. But I think it's probably worth at least talking about, why are they different? Why are they not uniform? Why do we have some appointed and some elected? I think from the state's point, standpoint, it would be a million times easier if it was uniform on, on who do you go to on certain issues or things that are happening, right? And I don't know if that's something FSBA wants to really put polls out to their members. I'm sure they know which ones are elected versus appointed. And, and this could go back to the charters and those counties. And I don't really know the legality of how all that changes, but it's something that I think would be beneficial to look at for the state if it was all the same, either all elected or all appointed. And I don't have preference one way versus the other. I will say, I like, well, actually, that's not true. I like our version here. So I guess I would prefer the appointed. But Board, I don't know what your thoughts are. Or Ms. Campbell, have you thought about this or talked to other members in different counties?
I would, I mean, yes. And some that's worked well for and some that hasn't. And I, my hesitation on that would be, I'm a firm believer in as much local control as we, we would have. And the state, unfortunately, over the last few years, has, for, in different ways and different reasons, limited that local control in a lot of ways. And when it comes to the voters being able to choose how they want it, every county has the ability to choose. Because, for example, when, I think it was Lee County is one of the last ones, in order to switch it, the Legislature can be the one that instigates a vote in a county. And so they, that happened recently in a couple of counties and over the last couple of sessions. And then the county voters chose, for example, Lee County, to go back to an elected. And so that, for the state to come down and say, okay, I don't really care what any of you individual counties, the way, if you like your system or if you don't like your system, now you all have to do it that way. Personally, I wouldn't be in favor of that. And I don't think FSBA, because we're representing so, such a diverse, tiny counties and big counties. And usually it is, Lee would be the exception now. I think they're probably the largest elected superintendent now. I think Pasco was the other one. Yeah, Lee is the largest elected. So, you know, generally, it's more of the small ones. But the majority of counties actually are elected, not appointed.
I don't, I don't know the exact number. I think I last time looked at it, it was, I don't remember. It was pretty close to half. But the only thing I was just thinking about this is like, the state sets standards and expectations of us, and the local rule doesn't get to really dictate that. I mean, that is, that is the way it goes. And so I'm just thinking from a state standpoint, if, if I were at the Department of Education, and one of those wonderful things, right, how do you make this easier on who you're going to hold accountable when something is or is not going well? Is it the board? Is it the superintendent? Yes. Should be yes and yes, right? But, and then who is the highest, I don't know. That's, that's one of those things where it just gets a little funky. And what I'm hearing from a lot of people that have, or a lot of the school board members who have the electeds, is they are running into a ton of issues with the superintendent carrying out wishes that the board is giving them and direction that they're giving them. And so that puts the board in a compromising position, because quite frankly, all they can do is, A, call your superintendent out, or actively campaign against them when they're running again over the thing. So it's just not really the best scenario, right? I don't think. I mean, that's my personal opinion, but.
Well, I, I hear their problems, and I would think that their recourse would be to go to their legislators, which, like, the people in Lee County did.
Well, that's what this is. That's what I was thinking.
No, their legislators.
No, I know.
Their legislators, to cause a vote in their county. Because honestly, as a big county, one of the bigger ones, and who hasn't appointed, for us to come down the side of, we think everybody needs to be like us, or to have the DOE come down and say bureaucratic control, and whether you like the head of our DOE or not, it's still bureaucratic control, whether they're conservative or not conservative or whatever. It's, it's not, that doesn't go to the people. The people don't have any direct control of the Department of Education. So any, any kind of major shift we have where the, first of all, I don't think they would do it. I think this is dead in the water. So, but again, I go back to local control. I wouldn't support that. I mean, any, just, and just so you know, the FSBA platform, we can submit things as a board altogether, things that we're all on board with, but any individual members, of course, you're not a member this year, you can also submit individually, your own item, and, and it's, it's open to individuals or boards as a whole. So it can be done either way. So.
Well, again, like I said, the board may not be in favor of doing that. I still think, and I can work on it on other ends of it, too. It's just something that I've heard from multiple counties, that this is, it's a struggle they're facing.
I think, I think that in general, because we've seen, both from the appointed and from the elected side, some accountability issues, you know what I mean? And then, so I think where your intent is, is there. I believe in what you're saying as far as trying to find an accountability model that works and is, is there. I'm not against it. I think more about the conversation wrapped around how, if it does not seem that the superintendent is moving on what the board's wills and wishes are, there's some sort of recourse for that.
Right.
And what is that? Because in an elected, if it, if they are, in our world, it is that, you know what I mean, Dr. Rendell could lose his job, right? But in the world of the elected, he's just there. You just tell him, pounce in and keep going. So maybe there's something that we can do in that regard. Maybe Ms. Campbell's comments are, you know what I mean, in line with probably a larger of the majority of the voters at FSBA. So maybe the idea is, is some sort of a trigger on the elected superintendents that allows that the board feels that they's not moving in the direction that they are, that there's some sort of a trigger that may be caused for a special election. So in some of the other election places, there's, you know, for like, prime ministers and stuff like that, you call for a vote.
A vote of no confidence.
A vote of no confidence. And then a vote of no confidence triggers into something. So maybe there's a way. So maybe the idea is, is that maybe an overt, like, straight, unilateral thing across the board, but maybe the Legislature can put something in, in the event that there's an elected official that's not doing the will of the board. I don't know.
Of course, the governor has not backed off from removing superintendents over the last few years. She's done that a couple of times. Am I correct, Dr. Rendell?
Yes.
I believe so.
Yeah. So the governor has, he already has power to remove a superintendent if he wants to, an elected superintendent. But just for your knowledge, Governor DeSantis and Education Commissioner Manny Diaz support elected superintendents intentionally because of the way maps are drawn, so that certain people will be elected. So it is dead in the water if it's going to be proposed the other way, because it's just completely against what they've been putting out publicly.
And again, like I said, when I, when I bring this conversation up, this is based on conversations from other school boards all around the state and just trying to figure out, how do you fix this problem if it's, there are things they're facing. So it's probably something the state should look at. And, and that's okay. If we don't, if as a board, we're like, hey, we don't like this, that's fine. We can, we can move on to the next one I have. So.
Oh, wait, let me, just, sorry, Ms. Wright, not to interrupt you, but since we did talk about the loan forgiveness, just to, I'm quickly researching, it's not deep, deep details. But I, I can't find proof that the teacher one changed. They would qualify under public service loan forgiveness, but that's a 20-year program. The teacher one is 10. So I would keep it on there just in case, because I can't find proof that 10 changed.
I'd just keep it on there, just because it's never been found out there. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
One of the other ones I had wrote down was the CTE instructors being exempt from the general knowledge exam. And I, Ryan's looking at me in the back, so I don't, I sent you an email about this, so I was trying to read through Florida statutes on. Is there a clause in there? I know we're updating the work, the policy that we have, and it's going to give more time. But when we're looking at specialty CTE instructors, like welders, or if they have their welding license, is there, is there a way to exempt them from that general knowledge exam portion of that?
We can make a.
Right.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
No worries. Yeah, so I have the document for you. I can provide it to you.
Oh, sorry.
It is housed in the Bureau of Education's Partnership Manual.
Okay.
It's only accessible to district-approved certification specialists.
Okay.
But I do have it, and I can provide it to you.
Okay, perfect. I would love to see that if possible.
Roger that.
Okay, so that might, that might.
So does that mean that they are exempt now?
I literally just sent this email, so he's like, give me more than.
But I think this is a broader conversation, because this has affected a few employees.
So our CTE teachers are locally, they're, they're locally certified. They're not state certified.
Right.
They're certified with the district. So they're not taking the same courses as our regular teachers are.
So they're also, the, the general knowledge exam is the one that I think, and I don't know if they are or not, but even outside of CTE, we've had a couple of problems this year because the Legislature put in some exemptions over the last few years. The general knowledge exam is only required for people who don't graduate from a college in the state of Florida.
Correct.
So, for example, I had this conversation with Dr. Rendell. Dr. Rendell had already been teaching and certified outside the state. When he came down to Florida, he had to take the general knowledge exam. And that means people who are like English teachers or history teachers, whatever, have to go back years after they've taken, for example, algebra, and have to pass an algebra exam when they're, we're actually wanting them to come and teach history, English, you know, whatever it may be.
Pre-K.
Pre-K, right, pre-K. So, so we're kindergarten, whatever it may be. So we've had quite a few instances over the last few years. We have teachers who were excellent teachers, highly effective, you know, had just great results, but we almost had to lose them because they couldn't pass the, that's separate from the professional exam, but that general knowledge exam. So I think we need to have a, we need to put something in here about having them take another look at the, what testing requirements at the state level should actually be required for teacher certification, and what flexibility can they give school districts when we have a successful teacher? And some of, like, the ones that we're voting on to this policy that we looked at today. But I think it's going to have to go beyond that, because even the policy we're looking at today, that only gives them another five years, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So at some point, they're still running into, they have to take, they have to pass those tests. And at that point, they might have 10 years of successful teaching behind them. And yet, we have to say goodbye.
It's not something we can do outside of state parameters, though, right? So, right, it's the state statute that we're just trying to align it with.
This is an item that we, I think we can all get behind.
Yeah. And I was looking at it from more of the CTE aspect of things, because selfishly, I'm going to use my, my welding instructor, which we have, I, I know we have a new one, but I'm a little partial to the one that was there for a long time. Phenomenal welding instructor who was placing our kids in jobs right away, the day they graduated. If they went through his welding program, they were walking into a job at $60,000 a year right off of graduation. So, but would not take that general, the general knowledge exam, didn't want to do it, just because he's like, hey, I'm a welder, I'm licensed by trade, I've done this for 30 years, I don't need to, I don't need to teach this class. Quite frankly, I'm giving back to the community. So my thought was, hey, if the, if we're looking at CTE instructors that are teaching a specialty skill or trade, talk, or something in the legislation that says if they're licensed in that, that skill or trade, that maybe that gives them the exemption from the general knowledge exam portion.
You just said a phrase that triggered something for me, too. So when I first got hired by BPS, I was told I had to take the general knowledge test, which was the year that there was, like, mass chaos, because clearly something was up and, like, 70% of people were failing the essay, but they wouldn't tell you why. And then I found out, after taking it three times, that I never needed to take it in the first place, because as a speech language pathologist, I'm licensed by the state. So it is for certain areas. So that would be something that would be palatable, too, probably, if it's long, as long as they hold a state license, they have some way of accrediting that person in their profession. So that's, that's probably the tagline that would work.
Okay. Board, are you in favor of that one going before FSBA?
Yeah.
And in, in combination with that, some kind of expanded reciprocity, because we have, Florida has so few states that we have reciprocity with. So if you, you could be a 25-year teacher in, in certain states and move to the state of Florida, and you, you have to, am I getting that right also?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have to do all the things. And that is, when we have so many people moving in and we're in a teacher shortage, that's an easy fix to allowing more teachers in.
Wasn't it the case with our counselors as well? If they had a degree?
Like our school counselors?
They had to take a content test, even though they're a counselor, but their original degree was in math. And, you know, they haven't touched it in X amount of years. So that was, I had a counselor, like, frantic about that, so.
But I think the reciprocity issue could take care of a lot of, a lot of things. I hate to throw too much at them, but, you know, I'll try to keep it broad, maybe toss something out to you guys. It's not necessarily something we have to vote on. So Paul, is it something, if I get something drafted, that I can send out to the board and they can say yay or nay?
Recommend it. Bring it up at the next board meeting.
Okay, all right. I will. I will. Okay. Because we, we do have another board meeting on 27th. I'll try to send something to you guys between now and the 27th.
Okay. All right. And that was, thank you. All right, I have one more. And it's kind of based on a unique situation that, that took place last school year. And it has to do with the state's definition, oh, my mic is off, sorry, the state's definition of an unaccompanied minor. So ran into a situation with a high school student. We, I have, you know, teenagers and I think. We, I have, you know, teenagers, and I think so, you know, most of us here have raised teenagers, so we understand that sometimes they can be a little unruly. But we had a situation with a teenager who ran away from home, quote unquote, ran away, because his father wouldn't let him go on a field trip he wanted to go on. And so, he was mad. And so, his solution to this was to run away from home, which triggered him to now become an unaccompanied youth, because he was couch surfing, basically, in essence, which in turn, triggered a lot of other things that happened. We've, we followed the law, we followed the law 100%, so everything was done correctly from the district standpoint. But where it became a little, a little disheartening is when the parent reached out and said, hey, what's going on here? I told my son he couldn't go on this trip. I'd used that tool as a punishment because he was not doing well in a class. And his solution was to run away and say, I'm homeless. And now, all of a sudden, all these other things start coming into play where the student gets basically what he wants, because he was manipulating the system. So, my thought on this, and I get this is a slippery slope, because there are students that are, that this works for very, very well, and we need that to stay. But that there be some type of wording within that definition that gives parents the ability to object to them being considered an unaccompanied youth, if that makes sense.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, someone in the back might have to answer this question, but, so if they're identified as an unaccompanied youth, does that then take away the parental permission forms?
Yes, so, no, yes and no, so.
Or like, is there a timeframe for that, I guess?
So.
Like, at what point do they, like, they're not.
Great question.
They're not wards of the state at that point.
No.
So, how exactly do we get around them not having permission?
So, they, they become, well, in this case, and so, I'll pull it up just so I can see. I'll, I can send you what I got emailed to me from the district personnel. And again, everything was followed, the law was followed on this, but the frustrating part was that this one was just written in a way that, it's not very good. So, we need, the parent needs to have the ability to object. So, if a student decides they're mad at mom and dad, they don't like what mom and dad says, that they're not gonna let them go to homecoming because they're failing their math class, that the kid doesn't run away and now goes to their counselor and says, hey, I'm, I'm sleeping on couches, I'm an unaccompanied youth. And now, all of a sudden, a garden, guardian or, or legal, somebody, you know, basically whoever's couch they're sleeping on can now sign off on forms for them, which is what took place in this situation, and it was within the law. So, I'll send you what I have, just so you can see it. It was a very, very bizarre situation, but I'm just thinking, hey, if there was something written in the law where the parent can object to this, so if a student is running away because they're choosing to do so, and the parent's saying, hey, I'm a good parent, I wanna be involved, they're rebelling against me because they're teenagers, I can object to it, and the parent still has a say in what's happening as far as, because their educational rights don't transfer till they're 18 years old, but it gets a little weird when they become an unaccompanied youth, so.
And then, and then do they lose, are they, were they not getting, that's, are they not getting like focus access and?
Parents' focus access cut off immediately.
Wow. So, there has to be, I guess, I don't know if someone in the back can answer this question, because there would have to be some kind of legal process taking place to where that transfers to someone else. There's no way, like, just, they just get labeled and then anyone can have access to making permission. That doesn't make any sense.
I can look into it.
It's super specific, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it prior to today, so.
I know, this is a very, yeah, it's an extremely specific situation. And again, when we looked at this before and we talked, I talked to several people at district, I'm like, oh my gosh, this is kind of scary, because as a parent of a teenager, I'm going, if my daughter rebels against me and decides she's gonna go sleep on her best friend's couch, does that mean now, all of a sudden, I no longer have access to any of her educational records? I no longer have the authority to give permission for field trips? I no longer have a say whatsoever in what's happening with their, their education? So, I just feel like that, it would be smart for the state to consider a clause that gives the parent the right to object when a student is identified as an unaccompanied youth, so that they still have the parental right to have a say and a role in their education. So, that was my other one. And again, that was a specific scenario that happened, but it, it scared me as a parent, and I'm sure would scare other people as parents if that were to happen to them. So, that was one of the other ones, sorry.
Good.
I know, I went on a soapbox here.
No, that's good. That's a good one. Can you add that one, Katie?
Yeah. And if you've got specific, you're gonna send an email to us, and if you've got specific language that you wanna put in it, otherwise, I'll, or if you have the statute link to, so that I can give something specific of, even if we don't say, this, you know, this is how it needs to be changed, that we can say specifically, this part needs to be changed or refined.
Gotcha. I'll send it all to you guys, what the statute is and all that fun stuff. Okay. All right, those are the three that I had written down, so.
Okay.
Anybody else wanna go, so I can quit talking?
I got a couple, but I'll wait. Everybody else can go. I'm sure mine. Go ahead. Ms. Campbell, did you have any?
My, the teacher certification piece, which I kind of dovetailed into what Ms. Wright said, just broadening that. The reciprocity also.
That's all you have?
Yep.
Okay. Jean, you got anything?
Not good so far.
Well, I'll go. So, one of the problems that we, we have is, is that we've created all of these extra pieces around the certification for teachers, but we haven't really, ever really dived in and fought against that test of a student that they have to take. The general knowledge test, when I took it, and some of the other individuals that have taken it, have said and commented multiple times that what the questions that are on there are not pertaining to what they've been taught. And that they feel, and this is not, it is just an accusation, that there's a robust effort to try to have them not pass so that they have to keep taking it.
And paying.
Right. And I don't wanna throw anything under the bus, but I had a personal experience with the A push when I was teaching, that a majority of the questions that were taught that year or requested that year were not on the, on the syllabuses and stuff like that that they had given. And I wrote them all down. And I went and got myself in trouble by arguing against it and stuff like that. But to have a series of questions that are never looked at is not right. And so, what I'm gonna do, I'm not asking you guys to do this, because this is kind of hairy area, I'm just letting you guys know, I'm gonna go to war with that test. Because I think that, I do believe that it's, I do believe that it's not maybe transparent enough to see, for us to believe that it's there, because we have too many people failing that general knowledge test and some of those others, and holding back kids from having great teachers. And that's all. So, I just wanted to let you guys know. That's just one thing.
Okay.
So, did you have any other items you wanted to add?
No, I think we've pretty much got it. I mean, are, when are we gonna have our, Dr. Rendell, do we have an area when you're gonna bring forward some of the legislative requests? You know what I mean?
Yeah, some of the funding requests, yeah, those will come at a later date. I mean, staff's formulating those, but that won't be part of the legislative platform, necessarily.
And then, we have our little legislative, since we're talking about it.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a good, because, you know, we do have a later session, but we don't wanna wait too, too late to start working on it.
Start talking about it now.
Dr. Rendell, did you have any suggestions that you would make on your end?
I did, yeah, thank you, Ms. Campbell. So, looking at the FSBA platform for last year, there was some things that were on there that were actually asking for continuation of some, of some things. For example, in the area of funding, one of theirs was support the Workforce Development Capitalization Incentive Grant Program, Workforce CAP is what it's called, and expand eligible programs to include elementary and middle school CTE programs. Currently, only secondary and post-secondary CTE programs are eligible for that funding. So, I would love it if we had a state in, a statement in there very similar to that. Workforce CAP is a way that we are looking to maybe capture some of the funding that did not make it through the last legislative session. So, workforce cap, for example, is something that we might use to try to fund the ag program at Astronaut. You know, so it's another round of funding that's available to us, you know, not inside the legislative session, but, so, but to have on the legislative platform our statement requesting that they support the funding of workforce cap.
Okay, so, are you, so are you good with the language from last year?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, I've got some, of the ones we were all on board with, the pre-K teachers' language, which I will pull off of last year, the teacher certification, and I'm gonna just kind of wrap several things around that specifically related to general knowledge, all specifically mentioned CTE teachers, and the professional exam, also reciprocity between the states when it comes to teacher certification, the state's definition to be refined of an unaccompanied minor, and then, that item off of last year's FSBA platform related to the workforce cap expansion funding. Okay. Did I get it all?
Anybody else have anything else?
And I'll put in there, and if you don't do this one thing, Matt Susan's gonna go to war.
Yeah, he's coming.
Well, I just, you know, when I was at.
To Tallahassee.
And I have, I just have to say, when it comes to certification, I realize this is a fine line, I don't want anybody here in the public to think that we're, we're going too far, because you do want highly qualified teachers, and, but the truth is, some people are terrible test takers. The truth is, some of these tests are terrible.